Edward Torian.
Here.
Robert King.
Here.
Diane Servello.
Here.
Carlo Moreno.
Here.
Paul Swenson.
Here.
Mary Cronin. And Mary Comstock.
Here.
Peter Buzade, present. And Peter, would you read the minutes from the last meeting, please?
Can I give you a minute on that? A couple of things. Yes. At our last meeting, which was on November 13th, 2007, the commission discussed and unanimously adopted a schedule of its regular meetings, which will be held at City Hall at 7:00 in the evening. There are numerous dates, I'm not going to go through them. And second, we approved the policy of permitting input from the public at the beginning of each of our regularly scheduled meetings, and such input should be limited to the total length of time allotted to each person as to the chairman and his discretion deems appropriate. Those were essentially the minutes.
Any corrections or additions to those, to the minutes? Then the minutes stand, stand as read. It has been brought to my attention that we probably should start each meeting with the pledge to the flag. So could I ask that the commission stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation without doubt indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who said, "Just came"? Peter, now, please note that Dr. Cronin is, is not present. This is our first public meeting for the Charter Revision Commission, so as a result, we're open to the public. We would like to invite anyone to come forward, please give us your name, state where you live, and address the commission. Mayor Bowden?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Bowden, 23 Allen Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, 06810. Mr. Chairman, first of all, I thank you and the commission again for your diligent work in this process. I presented to you a menu, if you will, of really concepts more than specific recommendations. I sat down between the last meeting and this meeting, and initially we had discussed doing a PowerPoint and having all kinds of specific, driven-down recommendations, but the more I thought about it, the more I said, "That sort of defeats the purpose of the commission." And I thought it would be better just to present some concepts and some ideas that, and some areas of tension within our current charter, and then suggest some ways to correct that, but ultimately leave that up to your legislative purview to determine what the best way is to get from point A to point B. And so that's what you see in front of you, and it is vague intentionally, because we have a lot of brilliant minds that sit on the commission, and I'm sure you'll do all of your homework and find the most expeditious and efficient way to get done some of the things we need to get done. So I'm going to take a moment and walk you through the document that I present to you, and then let you know that this is not the first time I'll be at the public hearing addressing the commission. There are other department heads that are providing rather lengthy thoughts to you that they've asked me to bring to you, and I'll do that as the process goes on. So, if you look in front of you on page one, the first recommendation that we have coming from the administration is that we would like to coordinate land use policy in practice by combining the planning and zoning functions into one planning and zoning commission. According to our Plan of Conservation Development, which was adopted in 2002, this is one of the key recommendations of our plan of development. There has been some discussion in the community about this, some people feel it's sort of a, it might actually streamline the permitting, that's sort of the point, but also, what's more important, we'll be able to give prospective economic development projects in the city an answer yes or no a lot sooner than wasting time with engineers and lawyers and all the things that go through that, and you make it through planning, and then you don't get through zoning, or you make it through zoning and you never make it through planning. We'd rather just tell them no right off the bat than have somebody be terrorized through six months, two years worth of meetings, and then find out at the end that they can't do what they want to do to begin with. And so that's part of it, but also there has to be discussion and then integration between the planning commission and the zoning commission. Too often, both those commissions tend to make decisions in a vacuum without consideration of the impact on zoning, or zoning not understanding the impact on planning, and hence that's the idea in which we have a combined commission. If you look in other communities that have much more stringent and rigorous development standards, they have a P&amp;Z commission. So this isn't a question of us trying to make it easier, in fact, if you look at the zoning changes we've made over the last year and a half, we've actually made it much more rigorous to get your project approved, but it is a more efficient way to do business within the city. I thought a lot about recommending that this position be elected, my personal preference is that it be elected, but I didn't put that on here. I said it could be elected or appointed, in fact, it says preferably appointed, that Dennis Elpern, our planning director, maybe put preferable on, we had a big argument about that today, I said I'll leave it in, but my thought on election would be that they'd be responsive to the voters, and that they would be able to, the voters would be able to send a message about planning and zoning issues within the community by simply voting out the planning and zoning commission. Dennis's, our planning director's thought was that oftentimes there are zoning commission members who get elected over and over again, who don't necessarily make the best decisions for the city, and the idea would be that since the mayor or the chief elected official tends to take the, the good with the bad as a job, if residents weren't happy with planning and zoning decisions made in the community, they would just vote the mayor out. So he thought, he argued for an appointment to that position. So he swayed me a little bit towards the end, but again, I think the best thing to do here would be to survey the other communities, see what works in their surrounding towns, and what they like and what they don't like, and then make an informed decision if you decide to adopt this recommendation. One of the things I'd like you to look at also within our charter is to review each of the responsibilities of the department, and then make sure that those responsibilities and duties reflect the current needs of the city. That's why I said in the beginning I'll be back time and time again, I'm sure you're going to have questions, you may want to talk to the department head directly, which will, I'll provide for you to answer your questions that you might have related to the operations of their individual department. But certainly there are things in the charter now that sort of don't make sense, this is, you know, kind of one that hits you right over the head, we have a director of welfare, but the city doesn't do welfare anymore. As you know, with all the changes that happened in the welfare programs in the 1990s, we don't give out checks, the city doesn't do that. So the welfare department primarily manages, amongst casework, they also do casework as well, but primarily manages the shelter that we operate on New Street, and then does casework, ancillary casework surrounding the shelter and issues of housing and homelessness. So I think we need to go back and look at the actual language in the charter specifically talks and speaks to passing out checks and making sure everybody's got their check at the right time. I certainly would say to you that we need a welfare department, I don't like the term welfare, I never have, but I think we need that department, so I'm not suggesting that we don't need it, but I am suggesting its mission is, got to rethought, be relooked at and retooled. I mean, I think that's true with all of our departments when you go through them. We have a civil preparedness department, well, last time I checked, the Cold War's over, we don't need to prepare for a nuclear holocaust anymore, but we certainly need an emergency management director that will deal more with natural disasters than, or heaven forbid, a terrorist event than they would have to deal with a nuclear war. So I think those are, there's another department where I think you'll have to review and look at and tick through that, and I think they're probably the most logical thing to do, and that would be to make a spreadsheet, put every department on there, and I can help you in terms of providing the staff support to, to put that together. So you can see it right in front of you versus thumbing through the charter every two seconds to figure out what's what. And I guess what goes in part and parcel with that is, we've had a lot of requests from our department heads to change the title of their department. We have a personnel department, which really should become the Department of Human Resources, we don't use the term personnel anymore, we use human resources. We have a health and housing and welfare department, I like the term health and human services, because human services is more encompassing of what our welfare department does. And you'll want to look through some of the other department titles and make sure they kind of match up. Going along with that also means that we'll look at specific jobs. I have an executive secretary in my office, perhaps executive assistant might be a little bit more up-to-date, and there are other titles that really aren't used anymore, they're not in vogue anymore, and we probably should go back and, and change those to reflect more current terminology. Ditto that with the description of the public works and parks and recreation departments. We've had, particularly in the public works department, under the current charter, which is very flexible, there's a lot of latitude provided to the public works director to organize his or her department in any way he or she wants to, to get the job done. And Mr. Idrola has done that, but I think he's come up with a reapportionment of responsibilities and duties that really is very much cutting-edge and has been working out very well, where he's created different divisions. We have, for example, a customer service division, which is, which our, Duke Hart is our department head of, and he's responsible for all of the issues related to servicing the community, plowing, fixing things, that kind of work. And then on the other side of the coin, we have a construction management division that builds things, and those two do talk all the time, but there's a division of labor there that's become much more efficient and saved us money. And we'll provide a, a flow chart for you, a spreadsheet or design, if you will, that 'll show what we currently have in place and what we'd like to codify, and still leave some of the latitude in the charter so that the department head might tweak things, move things around should Mr. Idrola move on. Another issue that we have within the charter is the bonding limit, I've mentioned that to you before, in 1977, the amount was $50,000. 1990, it was raised to $500,000, that was 17 years ago. We would, we would look for it to be raised by a minimum of about $2 million. Now, to give you the background on that, what that means is that every year, when the city needs to go out and pave, we can only pave up to $500,000 worth of roads, or do $500,000 worth of drainage, without going to the voters for a vote to spend more money. To do that, it requires a Herculean effort of the council and of the residents to come out and vote, and it's costly, because we have to set up the polling places, we got to hire the workers, we got to do all those things that go with that. Every community, every city our size, some of them don't go to the voters at all for bonding, I'm not suggesting that, but most of them have a pretty high trigger before you have to go to the voters. We can execute about $1 million of paving a year, okay, about a million bucks. So we, by saying $2 million, that would give us enough money to continue a, a real capital improvement program that continuously upgrades our roads and our bridges and things like that, and also provides contingency money for the bridge that breaks, or some catastrophic infrastructure failure we have in the city. We don't have anything right now to be able to, to do that without having to go to the voters, and so that can be problematic for us. If we're going to build a police station for $60 million, we ought to go to the voters and say, "What do you think, guys?" But if we're going to go out and pave and, and fix bridges, your government should be doing that for you, and certainly there is enough internal controls with the council to determine how we spend that money to, to do that without having to set up a full vote of the entire community. And so, the dollar figure I had in there was $2 million, also because we don't want to set a dollar figure of like a million bucks, and then know five years from now that that dollar figure's too low, what are we going to do, now we got to go back and change the charter again. So my thought was, instead of putting a figure low, let's be realistic and say, "Well, it's not only going to serve us now, but it'll service in seven, or eight, or 10 years from now," and do that. And, you know, just to give an example, some infrastructure projects, the Rose Street Bridge that we're building, Rose Hill Bridge that's shut down right now, is driving everybody nuts that they have to go around, that's $1,300,003 to fix that bridge, that's $1,300,000. So you can burn through $2 million very quickly, I mean, you got to have a bridge, I mean, you can't just close it down. If you try to budget for these expenditures, the problem is, is that it, it's actually cheaper to borrow in terms of impact on the taxpayers, but the problem is, is that you end up driving up the mill rate so high that, you know, it becomes intolerable for people. So by allowing us to borrow, we can manage that a little bit better, and Danbury's indebted debt is very, very low, and I can answer any questions about that. So that's something you'll need to look at, look at carefully, and again, you know, our finance director, Dave St. Lera, is here, he can provide all the information you need about how we bond and what we do, and if you have specific questions about process, we can, we always can answer those for you. I also have in here a bullet about comparing the conflict of interest provisions, section act of streets, and newly revised state rules, and revise ours as appropriate. So we should always be looking at maintaining the highest ethical standards within local government. Danbury's been blessed over the years that this has not been an issue, local, and other governments around the region, you hear, you know, all kinds of horror stories, but we've been pretty lucky with that, but that doesn't mean that we're doing all we can, and we should always be, do all we can to provide the most amount of transparency and the most amount of, the highest amount of ethical standard we can. And so I would encourage you to look at what the state's done, to see if there's anything in there that perhaps we would want to incorporate within our charter. For example, do we want, say, a revolving door policy, which says that a department head, or a mayor, or a chief elected official can't leave the office and then the next month go work for somebody that has a contract with the city? I think that's bad practice, and I don't think it should, really should be allowed, but I certainly would look to, to close that door and say, "You can do that, but you got to wait a year," that's how it is in the legislature. So those are some of the things you might want to poke through and look at what other communities are doing. We do have an ethics commission, it does me, fortunately, they don't have a ton of work, but when they do, they do take it seriously, and they do issue rulings based on, on what the question is presented for them, but we can always certainly look to maintain the highest standard we can. Section 7-8 speaks to sewer and water assessments in our charter, we probably should include that for other public improvement projects. Roads can be assessment projects, we have a lot of private roads in the city, they all want to be a city road. Unfortunately, the only way we can let them do that is by using the assessment method, there isn't really, it's difficult, we, we get there, but it's hard and unwieldy for us to, to do that, so we'd rather treat a road improvement plan just like we would a sewer or water project, and provide for that within our charter. If people want us to do the work and they want to pay for it, we should be able to do that. Next bullet has to do with settling of cases covered by insurance, which is different than covered not by insurance. Things that are not covered by insurance tend to be punitive damages, things that might go beyond the scope of what governmental operations are. So, for example, Johnny Jones slips on the sidewalk, breaks his ankle, out here at City Hall, sues the city, says, "I want $10,000 bucks," we go back and forth, finally settle on a number of $5,000, I've got to bring it to the council, although, although we have a deductible, theoretically, that's covered under our insurance plan, it's kind of silly to have to trundle that all the way up here. However, somebody else sues the city because they think that our police, $10 million, they think the, that's not a good example, but they think that the landfill smells, we should have to bring any kind of settlement like that to the council, and that's not covered under insurance, some of it was, some of it wasn't, but that's generally the idea, there's a sort of a threshold or a trigger that we want to hit, where it's got to come to the council. So that's why we put that in there, certainly not a, an attempt to go around the council, it's just an attempt to say, "Hey, the day-to-day realities are, the city gets sued fairly often on these kinds of things, flat tires and a pothole, whatever you can think of happens," and it's kind of silly to have to bring every minor issue to the council to get their approval, particularly when our, our legal team has gone ahead and negotiated settlement. And most times, you know, the insurance companies provide attorneys and staff to cover the lawsuit, and they pay for that, that's not our corporation counsel's office, that's a whole nother group of attorneys that work for the insurance company. This is another little minor thing, but it can, it can, does seem kind of silly. People donate to specific departments, for example, the senior center, the library tends to get a lot of donations, occasionally our fire department, police department will get donations. I put a threshold of $1,000 bucks on there, anything above $1,000 would have to come to the council, anything below could be accepted with permission or with the approval of the mayor. So if Sue Temanio, at the elderly, elderly services director, gets a donation of $25 from the cellmates for singing and a thing, and she wants to put in her line item for activities for seniors, she should write to me, "I've got this check," I should say, "Okay," send it to the director of finance, and we're done. Right now, all those, no matter how small the donation is, has to come to the council. So we spend, you know, a period of time in the council thanking everybody for their donation of $10 or $15, it gets kind of silly. So anything over $1,000, should get the appropriate recognition, we should do that, anything below, that does. Section 6-9 speaks to police officers and their appointment. Right now, we have language in our charter and our ordinances about hiring of police officers, but police officers are certified by the state of Connecticut, the state of Connecticut, through the Police Officer Standards and Training Council, what we call POSTC, has their own rules and regulations about who can be a police officer. And a police officer is certified by POST, that's the Police Officer Standards, and that certification is where they derive their police powers from. And so it's kind of inconsistent for us to have an ordinance saying one thing, but POST says something else. So my thought was to take POST's requirements to be a police officer and put that in our charter and say, "That's what you need to be to be a police officer." So we wanted to clean some of that up. Same process would apply, right now, as it works, the chief and the personnel director, soon to be the director of Human Resources, interviews potential candidates, they recommend them to me, I look at them for the final appointment, and then put that on the council agenda, and then the council confirms them. Mr. Gotchak has listed, I think it's 12, Rick?
12 corrections.
12 corrections in the current charter, those range from semicolons to commas, things like that, that just, for whatever reason, have never been there, we've been reluctant to just go and fix them, because I don't want anybody accusing us of that, we just went and fixed them, so, you know, we want your authority to do that, so he'll review those with you when the time comes. I mean, we'll, we'll clean up some of that stuff. One of the other things I just want to think about here, and it's kind of a silly thing, but I like us to think about the format of the charter and the way it's laid out, I think it would be really beneficial for us to include things like flow charts, organizational charts, all those things that people would want to see, and maybe look towards a little bit bigger document that the print isn't, you know, this high, that we're trying to read. I mean, we have it online, we have it everywhere, but it would be nice, when new elected officials come in and I hand them the charter, it's not this tiny little thing, and they've got to use a magnifying glass to figure out what says what. That's something that goes on with the printing, but, you know, there can be, another good activity would be to collect other charters from other communities, see what theirs looks like, and, you know, we'll try to model some of what they're doing. So those are some of my recommendations, there are other members of the public that wish to, to address you tonight, and I know we're going to be at many of these public hearings, so, does anybody have any questions of anything I've presented to you so far? Any concerns?
Any questions for clarification purposes?
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Another member of the public, Mary?
Good evening, Mary Saraceno, 5 Brinscall Court, Danbury, Connecticut. As some of you may know, I've just finished my term on the common council, and I wanted to address you tonight about a couple of things that affect the council that are in the charter and the elected officials. The first thing that I wanted to, to make a suggestion was that you might consider extending the term of the mayor, the town clerk, and the treasurer to a four-year term. The reason that I suggest this is that it seems that these offices, once the person takes it, by the time you learn the job, it's time to run again, and you're constantly campaigning and raising money, and I think that with a longer term, the person could actually get into the job, learn the job, and avoid that election year mentality of, "We can't make this decision because it's an election year, we must make this decision because it's an election year," or "Not an election year," it just would give more time, I think, for a, a good job to be done. The second suggestion that I had would be that the common council members also have their terms increased to four years. With a staggered election schedule, for example, not necessarily this way, but for example, ward candidates be elected in one election cycle, and at-large candidates elected in another one. And the reason that I suggest that is the same as for the mayor and the other constitutional officers, in terms of not always constantly running for election, I think we'd be more apt to get people to volunteer to do this job if they didn't feel that they were always out there campaigning. And second of all, I think that by staggering the elections, you're not going to end up with a brand-new council all at the same time, there will always be some seasoned members of the council there to help new people along, and, and there's some continuity and some history that's important for the functioning of the council that I think will be preserved that way. The next point that I wanted to make was that I, I think that we ought to eliminate the position of the city clerk. This is a job that's left over from the consolidation of, of the town and the, and the city back in the 1960s, it's a kind of a redundant job, and I think that now would be the time to, to eliminate it completely. I think that there ought to be a full-time civil service position created, an administrative assistant to the council. I think that it's important that this be full-time, because council members are always asking for help, scheduling committee meetings, and the like, and that would be the job of this person who would report to the council president. I also think that by making it a civil service position, two things happen. One, partisan politics does not come into play here, because naturally with a council, it has members of, of multiple parties, you want the person that's working for them to be, not necessarily of one party or another, or answering to one party or another through the election process. And then the secondly, it would, if this person was not subject to election, they could continue in the job from one council session to another, to another, and have some continuity and some efficiency in the running of the business of the council. So that's why I would suggest a position like that in place of the city clerk. And then one other thing that I, I didn't put on my list that I, I thought of while I was sitting there was, the council time is often taken up with the process of accepting sewer and water, approving sewer and water extensions. Now, these are people, the public developer, who come to the council and they say, "We'd like to extend the sewer to our house," or "Down our road," and they're, they're going to pay for it themselves, it's not a city-paid project, it's, it's personal. The engineering department reviews it, they review the plans, the public works people approve it and, and review it, the planning department reviews it, it's reviewed so many times, but then it's still, by charter, has to come to the council, and we have to have an ad hoc meeting, which means that we come out at a night to go, "Yeah, you guys did a good job, go ahead." I think that that is kind of outdated with the expertise that we have within our departments, and that might be something you'd consider removing from the duties of the council. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue in Danbury. I come at this from a different perspective, I'm a resident and a city watcher, and I've been in a lot of these things, I've also been honored enough to sit on the charter revision on the last commission, so I know what you all are going through. I went through the charter and found some things that I thought were wrong or needed fixing, let's put it that way, one of which I agree with Mary Saraceno, the four-year term for the mayor, I think is a good idea. I also think a four-year term for the council. And one of the suggestions I made is I know we're under law that we have to have minority rep, and I was thinking that one of the major complaints years ago was when people were elected, when it was a very strong Democratic town, you had a full Democratic council, they were all were all elected, and the Republicans were the minority. We had to kick people off who had gotten more votes than the Republicans had gotten. And that was a real bone of contention, like they weren't even elected, but they were there. And it bothered the city a lot. It bothered people a lot. So one of my suggestions was to have each party nominate two people. Even an independent could nominate two people, and then elect three from each ward. That guarantees you a minority because there'd be one from each party or two from one party, one from another. And everybody would be elected because you would take the top three voters, whether they were independents, Democrats, or Republicans. And this would prevent people from bumping people who got more votes as a minority rep candidate. I believe in term limits for all elected officials, and I'd like you to consider a two-year term for anyone to be in eight years. I think is enough time, whether it's on the council or whether it's a mayor. I'd like to see new faces and new whatever in the council. On page eight, it said, "The council in the charter at each meeting shall reserve the initial half-hour period for expressions of views from the opinions of the residents and taxpayers of the city meeting." Several times, I have been to meetings where there have been people in the audience, and they wanted to speak, whether it was on a touchy subject, but there were a lot of people here. The meeting has been shut down after a half an hour, even with people still out there with their hands up. My suggestion would be that you limit the time that the person is allowed to speak, you know, maybe to two or three minutes if you get to the half an hour, but at least allow every resident who has come out on whatever night to have an opportunity to at least speak for three minutes. I think that's fairer to most people. Under referendum on page nine, it says, "A petition is of not less than 15% of the electors of the city of Danbury filed with the town clerk within 30 days after publication for any ordinance." Now, that could be any ordinance that people are upset with. I don't know if you realize, but I called today, and there are 30,127 electors of this city at the moment. To get 15% of signatures in 30 days is 4,520. And you really need more than that because some people think they're electors and they're not. Their registrations have lapsed, or they've moved, or they signed the petition and they don't want to say no to you. But it is a tremendous amount of signatures to get. I know. I've done it. I did it when I wanted referendum, and it took me six months to get enough signatures. Mr. Erez was kind enough to accept the petition when he did not have to. But nonetheless, it took six months to get 6,000 signatures, which we needed. I would like to see those numbers lowered down to 5% of the registered voters, which is about 1,500 people, which is not an easy task either, but at least it's more reachable. I believe the number of 15% is onerous on any citizen, especially in 30 days. And I just went through the numbers with you, so I'll leave that part out. Would you please consider lowering the numbers to a more reasonable number like 5% or even smaller? If somebody is going to take the time to get a petition worded correctly, because it can be thrown out if it's incorrectly worded or whatever, it needs to be something that's manageable so that people could do it. And it's not just for referendum for the budget, although part of this talk is also on that. If a citizen is upset with the budget for any reason, and they want to take the budget to referendum, you go through this process. You get the number of signatures, and you go to vote at a referendum. When you vote at the referendum, if by chance you're lucky enough to vote it down, you accomplish absolutely nothing. It goes back to the mayor's budget of April 7th. So you have spent all the time spinning your wheels, trying to get something done, and you've been able to accomplish nothing but go back to the mayor's budget, whether it's this mayor or any mayor. It's just very frustrating as a citizen. You don't have a lot of say in the whole process. I know I had something else written on that, so it must be somewhere else in here. And I know for the last 17 years, I've actively watched the budget process, and the council has not changed the bottom line, whether it was under Mayor Erez or under Mayor Bowden. So even going through this process, you accomplish nothing. It's really an exercise in futility to try to, to change the budget in this city. I'm sorry I'm going to have to disagree with the mayor, but I'm very uncomfortable with putting planning and zoning together. I attend their meetings as well. They each consider different things. And by putting both commissions together, I'm not sure that this will serve a useful purpose from the public's point of view. Each commission listens to different things. Each commission gives the public another chance to address the commissioners. If something passes planning before the general public knows about it, they may still be able to catch it in zoning, and they may still be able to talk about it in zoning. If you put the two commissions together, one, it's going to be a tremendous amount of work for the commission. Sometimes they're here until 11, 12, 1 o'clock on just doing their own job, let alone doing both jobs. Two, I also agree that that should be an elected position. I think we're putting too much hand, power in the hands of the mayor if he appoints everyone, whether it's our wonderful mayor or whether it's another mayor. I'm sorry. I just think it's too much power in one mayor's hands, so that I'm dead set against that. When I read the corporate council's description in the agenda or in the thing, I noticed that all the others, superintendent of highway, city engineer, superintendent of public utilities, public buildings, equipment maintenance, police chief and fire chief, all have to work in their field for a certain period of time to be hired. It does not say that in for corporate council. I would like it to say that they've practiced law for five years before they can be hired by the city. I don't know whether it just went out at some time, but it's not in anywhere in the, in the thing. That's page 15, Bob. Page 21 is the Department of Elderly Services. This department should work to deliver services to elderly and advocate for, advocate for seniors, not just entertain them at the senior center. This section should be strengthened as the seniors do not feel, excuse me, I'm going to change that. I'm not going to say all seniors. I, as a senior, do not feel anyone advocates for me or my needs, and I find that very disturbing. We've been working on trying to get senior housing, better tax breaks for seniors because we can't afford to live in the town much more, and some help with medications, and for heaven's sakes, help with transportation. We're desperate need of transportation, and we don't see any place we can go to have this group advocate for the seniors. So I would like to see something strengthened in that area. The senior center is wonderful. It entertains people. It has parties. It has occasional meetings, but they don't go out and advocate for us, and that's what I think should be done. See, I did the duties of the mayor on the budget and the other part. Borrowing. I'm sure the amount should be raised and that the mayor can borrow without going to the electors of the city. But if the amount is raised, I would like to see you put a limit on how many times a year a mayor can borrow that much money, however much you all choose to set it. I don't want to see every couple of months the mayor borrowing $2 million, and I know our mayor wouldn't, but we're, we're deciding this for the future as well as who's there today. And I'm kind of leery when this can be done without talking to the public at all. I'm sorry. I just think that we ought to put some kind of a restriction on how often you can borrow $2 million, whether it's for good causes or not. And the last one, the Ethics Commission. I know there is an Ethics Commission in the city, but when I asked who they were, when they met, I was told it was only for city employees to report on each other and not for the public. Is this true? Is this how it should be? I also believe that when we limit, within the Ethics Commission, it's limited to husband, wife, or children that are in a different job. I'm not sure it shouldn't go further. It should include cousins and nephews and brothers and sisters can set up companies and do business with the city, and I'm not sure that that's right. I really think it should be outsiders and not relatives of people who work here. Thank you for listening.
Any questions for clarification? Peter?
I do have a question. You advocate for the four-year term, and many people have. My, I'm curious, would you also advocate, then, there's no recall provision in our current charter? If you give somebody a four-year term instead of a two-year term, would you then also want a recall provision?
Yes, I think I would want a recall provision. I hadn't thought of that. Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss a hand? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Helfer. I live at 8 Settlers Hill Road, and I'm here to offer my comments and concerns as you begin the process of charter revision. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service to Danbury. I hope that this process leads to more transparency in local government, more public participation at meetings and public hearings, and the highest possible standards of conduct by our local elected and appointed officials. One of the biggest problems I see with the current charter is that there are no penalties for charter violations. Now, I understand that there's a rather involved remedy called a writ of mandamus, where any aggrieved person can ask the court to order a municipal official to carry out duties, but the charter itself does not spell out any penalties or provide a framework for addressing charter violations. Now, I'll mention two violations that occurred in the past year to illustrate this problem. Section 2-6 requires all vacancies to be filled within 40 days. Ted Katsumpis submitted his resignation from the common council to the town clerk on April 5th in order to take a full-time position on the mayor's staff, and the recommendation for his replacement was not even considered until June 5th for a total of 61 days. Now, the second violation was of Section 3-2, which states that the mayor shall preside over all meetings of the common council but shall have no vote except in the case of a tie. At the May 1st meeting of the common council, the mayor cast two illegal votes to make a tie, one against amending the proposed parade ordinance, which had been adopted by a vote of 10 to 9, and one against a motion to recommit the ordinance, which had been adopted by the same margin. Now, I believe that if the charter is truly to be a framework for local governance and not merely a book of suggestions, a part, a part of this revision should be to incorporate penalties and remedies for violations in the charter itself. Now, a related suggestion is to incorporate a promise to uphold the city charter and ordinances in the oath of office for all elected officials. In the current charter, in 4-2, only the mayor, specifically only the mayor has the duty to faithfully execute all laws and ordinances governing the city. I believe that duty should be extended to all elected officials, especially in regard to faithfully following the city's code and ordinances. Regrettably, there are instances in which elected officials have not followed the ordinances, particularly the requirement in Section 2-9 for that all ad hoc committees of the common council report back to the council within six weeks or ask for more time. There are many ad hoc committees that appear to delay taking action, and they don't report back in a timely manner. One example, item 29 on the February 2007 council agenda was a request to accept Kenmere Road as a public street. This was referred to an ad hoc committee, which has not reported back on its recommendations for 10 months. And this is not fair to petitioners who are requesting action to protect the safety of Danbury residents. And a couple of other matters, I would, I would like to have the commission seek opinions on making the position of corporation council a civil service position rather than an appointed position. And that would eliminate the opportunity for political pressure to have an influence on the advice that corporation council gives to common councils, city boards, agencies, and commissions. I would also like the commission to seek opinions on making the common council a truly independent legislative body by giving the council president, rather than the mayor, the power to appoint members of ad hoc committees. A couple of minor changes you might want to consider. In Section 6-3, it describes the appointment of officers and employees, but some of the following sections are kind of unclear. For example, there are 12 appointments that have the language that the mayor may appoint, appoints and may remove, but then there are six more where there's the may remove, but language isn't there. And for planning director, the charter is completely silent on how the planning director gets in place. One thing that occurs to me, that occurred to me hearing the mayor speak, I agree with Mrs. Waller that planning and zoning should be separate. I think that, I think there should be as many opportunities as possible to consider projects that are being brought before the boards, and streamlining is a good thing, but not giving the public its due chance to object to projects that are problematic is a downside. The other thing is about the bonding limit triggering a need for referendum. I, I, I agree with the mayor that that probably should be raised, but a related question I see is about measures that result in a loss of revenue to the city. I think there should be a limit there that triggers a referendum. And I'm thinking of, of the tax assessment deferrals given to BRT that, that result in multimillion-dollar losses of revenue to the city. When there's that much money involved that the city's not getting, I think that it should go to referendum to the public, not just money that we're borrowing, but money that we're not getting. So that is all I have to say this evening. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm looking forward to your recommendations.
Any questions from anybody? Do we have a copy of your question?
Yes, I've given them to Mr. Buzey.
Thank you, Peter.
My name is Joseph De Silva and reside at 17 Mountainville Avenue in Danbury. I will apologize to the members. I don't have my comments in writing. I will put them in writing after and get them to the members. I rise in partial agreement with His Honor, the mayor, and with Ms. Waller, and in partial disagreement. If, in, if the commission chooses to combine planning and zoning, and I'm not necessarily sold that this is a good thing, I definitely agree with the mayor. It does need to be elected. Elected representation in this instance, these are important issues to voters, and the people who decide how the zoning regulations and planning regulations are implemented should be elected by the residents of Danbury. Moving on to Ms. Saraceno's suggestion, I would strenuously disagree that four-year terms are in any way, shape, or form better for the people of Danbury. This is especially true in a strong mayor form of government, which we have. We have a powerful mayor. That's been a very good system over the last 40 years for the city of Danbury. We've had seven mayors in that time. They've all done the job they've done, for the most part. We've had good representation. Four-year term, on the other hand, is not necessarily to the benefit of the people of Danbury. Frequent elections, on the other hand, are. Danbury has tended to reelect incumbents. Of the seven mayors, only two were single-term mayors. Everybody else enjoyed more than one term. It is necessary to get the voter's opinion. No politician should ever be scared to go to the voters for their opinion and for the reaffirmation reaffirmation for the job. Moreover, we should be encouraging public participation in our city. Fewer elections does not do that. Voter turnout in the United States is not good compared to what it used to be, compared to what it is in other places in the world. Our most recent municipal election voter turnout in Danbury was in the mid-40s. Next year, in a presidential election, if it hits 60%, it'll be high. A four-year term for mayor in the off-year, I would be surprised if voter turnout hit 35. Look at Stanford. This year, the city of Stanford, Connecticut, considered elections for Board of Education and one or two other minor city posts because they have a four-year term. I imagine we will find that their voter turnout was very low. Moreover, it's still just as expensive to run that election as it is to run an election for a mayor because you still have to staff all seven polling places. And it's one machine per polling place. It's not like we can roll out fewer machines like before. Nobody should ever be scared to visit, to run an election, to have the voters vote for them. Next, I will respectfully disagree with Ms. Waller in her point, term limits. We have them. They're called elections. If the voters of Danbury don't want somebody in office, they will vote them out. Period. If the voters of Danbury want to reelect someone, they will, and they should be given that choice. I happen to be the Democratic Town Chairman. Mayor Bowden is a member of a different party. It should not be up to this commission, or myself, or anyone else, to write in that Mayor Bowden is out of office because of the passage of time. If the voters are thinking he has done a good job, they should have the right to reelect him. They should have the right to not reelect him, no different than any other elected official. Term limits would not be beneficial to the city of Danbury. I will posit this city council to the commission, an eight-year term. Two four-year terms, as Ms. Waller proposed, would essentially lead to almost the entire 21-member council being out of office at the end of this term. There'd be virtually no experience of any kind left. Most of these members would be gone. I posit that that is not good for the city of Danbury. Institutional memory is good. Remembering how things have been done and just knowing the process is more important than regenerating for the purpose of regenerating the council. Lastly, there was a suggestion to make referenda easier to bring about. I will posit, we live in a representative government. This is not ancient Athens where all members go to the public square. It is a representative government. We elect people to represent our interests, whether it be in the Danbury Common Council, the Connecticut Legislature, or the United States Congress. I will posit, referenda is everything that is wrong in many of the smaller towns around us. It does not take an encyclopedic knowledge of local history to see the problems many of the towns around us have had passing budgets. Two, three, four, five, six referenda. There was one town in Connecticut that broke 10 referenda to get a budget passed. That's not good. It's bad for your city. It's expensive for our city, and it is, does not actually benefit the residents of Danbury. Doesn't benefit the residents of towns when they have to have three and four referenda. The cost alone of running the election, and when it's only 5% of voters, 1,500 people get to decide, that the city of Danbury has to run up that cost of running a referenda, thousands of dollars to staff the polls and bring out the machines and have ballots printed, and absentee ballots printed. Should not be. We have a common council. We elect them to represent our interests. If they don't, wait two years, vote them out of office. That'd be the conclusion unless anybody had a question. I will supplement what I just said, but in writing. I apologize for not having it tonight.
Any questions for Mr. De Silva?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to address?
My name is Wade Anderson. I live at 57 Old Lantern Road. I'm here as a taxpayer, if I could have a few minutes for that, and as a department head working for the city, and have a few minutes for that. I want to say that I've lived in many towns. I'm not a Danbury native. I've lived in different parts of the country. And I think what I've observed here in the 15 and 18 years, whatever it is, is that this is really pretty good. And you may not want to be changing too many things that much. I'm going to stand here and say there are a lot of things that should be changed, and you will identify those as time goes on. But I find it very attractive to have a strong mayor style of government. It seems to work out well. If I could stand away as a taxpayer and come back as a department head, what I would like to say is that I did not turn my notes into the mayor because I have some overarching content that I want to pass on to people here. What I'd like to counsel you to do is to enable a forward-looking initiative in all the technologies, in all the technology areas that might come up. There are things that are going on now that you couldn't have imagined a few years ago. There are things that will happen shortly that you just wouldn't imagine now. If you could find a way to include technology as part of the overall city charter, I think the entire constituency would be served. Things like electronic media, being able to use email, instant messaging, and I think we've only scratched the surface on this concept called social networking are going to become more and more prevalent as time goes on. And that is what the people, the constituents of the city, are going to be looking for. I'd like to mention, just what is your time horizon on this? Is this like a three-year charter revision or a five-year charter revision? Or is this going to be forever? And I, it's a rhetorical, I didn't mean to get an answer. What I meant to say is, please provide a way to enable changes in the future. As a final point, I want to stand before you as your humble technology servant. If you need anything, like email, progress reports, surveys, other content that might go on the Internet, myself and the entire data processing department are at your service. We've put up a small page so far that identifies the commission members and hopefully a way to get a hold of them, and we'll be glad to do that for the term of this project. Would there be any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, when you say incorporate technology into the government charter...
Do you mean enable electronic participation in city government? Is that what your idea is in essence?
No, that's not it. I think that the city government needs to be set and the rules set, and that's what it is for a certain period of time. And people can come in and say, you know, I like this or I don't like this, but that's the way it is. And then for the next time there's an election, or a charter revision, or whatever it might be, that would be the time to change. But I'm not sure I have the sense of your question, but I think my response would be that, no, we take it like it is.
Do you feel that the current department is up to speed with regard to technology and servicing the city of Danbury?
Absolutely, it is.
We have sufficient resources?
We have one of the finest, finest. This is not me. We have one of the finest data processing departments in the state of Connecticut. Anybody who comes in here, looks at our operation, gets the envy of what they want to do. We have enjoyed many years, going back to pre-whatever it was called, Y2K, where all the dates were going to fail. We have enjoyed a level of funding and a level of commitment from the people that are running and operating in the department. It's made it take care of any challenges that have come up. So we feel we're good on that. Would we like to have another, you know, $100,000? Oh, yeah. Would we like to have another person to answer the help desk calls? Absolutely. But you will find, if you survey other towns, others, forget the towns, survey other cities in the area, we are far and away the leader in almost every area.
Then you are provided the resources that you need to operate the department.
I have to speak that it's a year-to-year basis and say that whatever I come up with is based on what I did last year, and so far, it's been good.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Anderson, I suspect you'll be back speaking to us. Anybody else like to address the commission? Seeing none others. Can I ask the commissioners how you'd like to proceed? We clearly have our meetings set out so that we know when we're meeting next. It's just a question now of agenda and how we want to set agendas, and we can start the process. Any comments from anybody? Peter, I think we had some communications for people that were not able to be here tonight. Could we read those into the record?
We did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter from a Robert Ogden who's unable to attend tonight's meeting, and if you bear with me, I will read it into the record. Ladies and gentlemen, as a resident of Danbury for the past 40 years, I have been involved in the community as a member of the Common Council, various organizations, and a city employee from which I retired after nine years of service in 1995. During these years, I have observed and have been in contact with many of the offices and departments of the city. It is based on these factors that I make my recommendations and suggestions to revise the city of Danbury charter. First, one must realize that when the original charter was approved by the voters, Danbury was a small town which was ethnically diverse, consisting mainly of Irish, Italian, German, Portuguese, and Arabic communities. As a result, our forefathers deemed it necessary to have a number of elected offices to attract these various groups. Two of these offices are the office of city treasurer and city clerk. While we are still a very ethnically diverse, the various communities are not as cohesive as they once were in those days. I therefore believe that these two elected positions are no longer necessary. They are outmoded and superfluous. Note, I know both of these individuals who currently hold these positions, and I hold each of them in the highest regard and consider them outstanding members of the community. The treasurer's duties could and should be performed by the director of finance. I am confident that if a check of cities the size of Danbury around the state would not find a similar elective office to that of treasurer, the city clerk's office is simply not necessary. The duties could very well easily be performed by an administrative aide to the common council, much like it is now by the assistant city clerk. The elimination of these two positions would not only save a few dollars in the yearly budget as compared to the rest of the budget, but if they are continued, it could cost many thousands of dollars over the years. Thank you for this, your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Robert J. Ogden.
Any other communications, Peter?
That was the only communication that, where someone did not come and testify.
Okay. It's difficult to ask Mr. Ogden questions. Anyone have any comments that...
Yes.
Am I on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, reading this note, and thank you very much for forwarding it to me today. One concern that I have with Mr. Ogden's recommendation is this, the elimination of the treasurer and having these responsibilities go to the financial director. Putting my former hat on, I think there is a, certainly a conflict of not interest, but certainly, if you were to look at it from an audit point, this is not good internal control. You would have one person responsible, as it currently exists, for purchasing, for bill paying, for signing in the checks. Thank you very much. That's not very good. And I think the financial director, to his point, would probably say this is not a good idea either. Okay? I'd just like that right into the record. Thank you.
That'll come up when that becomes an agenda item. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 14th.
That's correct.
And what I would recommend to the council members, if there are things that you would like on that agenda so that we can start our process, and I don't expect that we can start this tonight, but if you would like to get back to me with agenda items and we can then meet, and I think what I might do is meet with the executive committee so that we can start putting together an agenda for each of the meetings, and then we can try to figure out who it is we would like to have speak before so that we'll have some idea of which way to go. Are there any areas that members of the commission would like to have added to the ideas that were presented to us tonight, based on the work that you've done so far? Are there specific things that you would like us to at least consider as agenda items?
I had one item that I just, the public didn't mention it, but when I was doing a review of other city charters, I noticed that many city charters have a provision that every, at least every 10 years, the charter should be reviewed, and I wanted that to be considered as something that we might want to talk about.
Anything else stand out to people that they want to get to work on right away? Or shall we give everybody time to think about the issues here, reread our charter, compare it to the other charters and the statutes, and start coming up with items that we want specifically addressed? And then we'll come up with agenda items and have people come before us. Any other comments or questions? Does anyone feel as though our work here is done tonight? And I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made and segmented to adjourn. Any questions, any comments about that? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.